With us we have Andy Mackel, Wayne Strasburg. And absent today is Sharice Amplihus.
Good morning, everyone. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you this morning as soon as the computer reboots itself. Maybe you're lucky here. The second line, it says.
We need some oil for next year.
Second line on page 10, it says estimated unassigned fund balance. See the second line? Thirty nine, and then you go to the second line there. Unassigned. So while we're waiting for the computer to come back, I did look through the narrative. I wanted to cover the narrative with you today as well. But as I was going through it, about a couple of errors, I might as well disclose right at the beginning. How's that?
Let me get.
Yeah, I have some things marked, Andy.
On page three. On page three. The narrative where it says 106.1 percent.
Yes.
That should be 100.8 percent.
100.8.
100.8 percent. Page 23. The Senate's below the table. Begins with the Board of Ed through the number 37,679. That should be, that was left over from last year. That should be struck out entirely. So there's three, two and a half lines.
What page are you on it?
Page 23.
23?
Yep.
Thank you.
Starting with?
The Board of Ed's proposed consolidated current year. Line that out through the number 37,676,790.
Okay.
The Senate that begins with the executive is proposing. That's correct.
Okay.
And then on page 21, the section on emergency services. I neglected to update that from the first executive's hearing through our final executive decision. So I need to give you an entirely new paragraph for that.
Okay.
The whole, that gets replaced?
Yeah, I'll give you, yes, I'll need to replace that entire paragraph for you. Now, I think I have this morning's presentation for you. And then we'll go back to the narrative and go through it page by page.
Okay.
Some of these slides you've seen, but I want to go back over the economic context. These are the slides from the public hearing that you've seen before. Look at the computation of real property tax rate and how the real property tax rate behaves over time. Then talk about the revenue estimate in total, budget strategy, and then go through the narrative. I think it's important, I know we look at this slide every time we get together, but to me, it's very, very telling because it places us in the context with the state where we really did take some, lose a lot of business activities. This is the sales and use tax slide. We are recovering. We are recovering, but we're recovering much slower than anybody else. The other part of the context is that the state, average, the state had a nice recovery slope here, and then it's begun to level off. So it's not flat, but the growth rate is substantially less than it was. And that's being driven by other counties like Charles who are going down, Calvert, which is flat, Antarongo flattened out. So there's a number of the large counties that have experienced a substantial change in the direction of their growth. So that means that the state as a whole, and I think that's why you saw the state write down the revenue estimate for 14 and 15 as well. So that's an important context for us as overall. If the state is not, if our house was here, it's still growing, but also slower.
What did you tell us, Charles, it dropped so dramatically for what?
No, I don't know why they dropped. I know that this is Caroline County, and that's Walmart, just because I happen to drive by there every day. I know when it was open.
About Garrett County?
Garrett, we discussed in one of our legislative breakfasts. They think that that's the large tourism complex that they've constructed up there with the, you know, what are happening. The next most important slide to us for county revenue is the employment slide. We went up, so this is the context for last, last year at this time, we were sitting right here. So we projected upward from there. And we went over this with the revenue write-down in February. So the projection was going up from here. Well, we ended December 30th here, and so now we're projecting out. And in the narrative, we'll get to a table that shows what the values of those two projections were. And I believe it's in the order of $20 million essentially over that planning horizon that we've lost. Difference between starting here and going up, and starting here and going up.
Andy, at Rick's public hearing, a gentleman got up and asked the question, you know, with the up and down of our revenues, why did you base our future revenues at an incline steadily without any sort?
Well, the general assumption nationally is that the U.S. economy is growing and will grow at between two and a half to three, three percent or so. So if you take the national economy is growing, the state of Maryland is well positioned on the east coast to grow, and it is still growing.
But we've seen from what the state's doing and what other counties are doing, we're not doing that.
Yes, so.
We're not, we're not the norm, in other words.
On top, on top of the overall projection of growth, there's going to be business cycles. There will be business cycles.
So you're.
But I can't predict the business cycle. I can just say that over the long run, we're going to grow. So what's our average long-term growth rate? Then that leads to the important point of fund balance. What is fund balance for? We have to keep a substantial amount of fund balance to soften the effects of future business cycles because they're not predictable.
So I guess I can assume that you're saying even though you're showing a steady incline, that it might not be that way?
I have no way of sure.
Okay, all right, okay.
I think what's interesting, I might get up here real quickly. If you look, if you look at the, if you look at the trending pre-boom, here's your, what I would call a normal trend line. And if you look at the trend line that Andy is showing here.
Flatter.
That trend line is flatter than our historic trend line. So, you know, again, we can't predict what employment is going to be, but when you look at it in a historic context, it's a flatter trend line than historically we've enjoyed.
You're being more conservative.
We're being more conservative in terms of our forward assumptions.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, we're not building risk into the, into the model here. We're pretty conservative. And so if you were sitting here, you know, back in '03, and someone told you that employment was going to take off like a rocket and go straight up, you know, who would have believed that forecast? And then, of course, we were all here when it turned down. And so that was difficult as well to predict. And so we had some misses down in this area as well, trying to judge when it was going to turn around. So this has been a tough couple of years for predicting revenue.
Is it, the very tail end of the current line, is that a flattened?
That is flat. Those are, actually, it's slightly up to.
Slightly up.
It is very slightly up.
Okay.
So that was sort of mimics here, where it was flat, and then it went up. But here, it flattened up and then it went down.
Sure.
So the best we can do is project a relatively conservative growth rate, and then a budget to allow ourselves some flexibility. And in the, in the overall context, I'll put the slide up towards the end. We've got about $900,000 of flexibility. Last year at this time, we had $4 million in flexibility. So we've lost a lot of flexibility because of this single event right here.
Is that the part of the curve that we lost the jobs, where it came up with 3.5 million income?
Exactly.
That's it?
Yep.
It was climbing above, and then it stopped.
Yeah, so, so we were here, we estimated that we would go here, but we wound up here. So that's the reason for the write-down of 14, and it also lowers our takeoff more than 15. Bear in mind, the, again, the red line reflects people who live in the county who have jobs, but not necessarily jobs in the county. The black line are the jobs that are actually in the county. So the lines are behaving somewhat differently. But in the later slide, we will see is that the job, the job trending here in Wycomico is following pretty much the same trend line as Sussex County. So here's Wycomico. We're actually, in the long term, start back here, that's '02. From here to here is actually job growth. This point is higher. Somerset, this point is lower. Dorchester is lower. Worcester, although they look like they're on a nice rebound, they've actually been on a steady decline since 2002. They came up during the housing boom, and they went down, and they've come up, but they haven't come up to as high as where they were. Sussex, our neighbor to the north, and also our peer, our peer, if you will, in terms of employment. They're in the 62,000 range, we're in the 42,000, 46,000 range. They follow the similar pattern to us. If you look at our pattern and their pattern, you can see that it's followed the same. They're ahead of where they were 10 years ago. We're ahead of where we were 10 years ago. But we both suffered from a loss of employment through the recession.
Is that both fractions of employment, people that live here and do not live here?
This, this is people who live in those, people, those are jobs in those counties. Jobs in those counties.
Now, what you're seeing right now is that, is that over in Worcester County and Sussex County, between 113 and the Atlantic Seaport, you're seeing a very, very strong resurgence in construction. Very, very active. I was, I was really surprised when I drove coastal highway about two months ago, seeing all the activity that's underway there. A lot of it's commercially oriented. In Worcester County, Ocean City, there's a tremendous amount of reconstruction, if you will, of commercial properties below the 90 Bridge to the inlet. A lot of the old stuff being taken out with new stuff filling up. But as you go further on the coast into Delaware, you're seeing a resurgence of housing as well. So because of that coastal influence, I think you're going to see a different trend line going forward in those two counties than what we're going to see inland.
It was also.
You know, the other thing that we have to think about, and it's very hard to predict this, there's, there's a fundamental shift taking place in the country with regard to retail and with regard to hospitality. You're seeing a lot of the old line retailers, JCPenney, Sears, those kinds of operations under severe pressure because of the changing manner in which people buy their goods. And there've been several very, very well-written articles about the fact that traditional, traditional retailing is going to really be reinventing itself going forward. There's not a whole lot that local government or even state government can do about that other than to be conducive to whatever activity has to take place. You're seeing the same thing in the hospitality industry with regard to, Bob would notice. Casual theme restaurants are under tremendous pressure because you've got, you've got a new group of consumers that are coming up, people Matt's age, who have an entirely different expectation for what they want when they go out to be entertaining their clients. And we're going to see that happening. There's very little we can do about it other than let the market do what the market's going to do. So predicting the types of jobs and the types of activity they're going to have becomes a bit problematic when you're in a fundamental shift like that that is taking place across the country.
So to go back to the fundamentals then, if you, if you look at this red line, this is the, these are construction jobs.
You could just pass those out.
Sure.
We lost a lot of construction jobs. And this looks, this is a slight uptick here in construction jobs. But if you take this total number of jobs that were lost, and you go back to here, I've shaded out, this, this is the number of those, this is the construction jobs lost. So as we were moving up into, straight up into this area, projecting up, this was a little sketchy because those jobs, I don't think they're coming back. So this, this longer, slower growth trend stays below what I think is a cap in total employment, at least from the construction. So that's how those slides tie together, and how we're trying to put it together. These are the jobs by sector in Wycomico County. Education and health services really led the way in job growth throughout the period. Government sector grew. Here's the hospitality, and leisure is growing again. Did fairly well overall coming through the recession, going up. Professional and business services came up, and now they're going back down again. Manufacturing really continues a long, very long-term trend of decline. And so I hope with Cadista and our shipyard, we're going to get an upturn in employment in manufacturing. Financial activities is still slightly negative. Other services are slightly, still slightly negative. Information technology is negative. This is natural resource of mine, it's actually agriculture line. Mind, we need some more jobs.
I'm trying.
I guess what's troubling when you see the recession taking jobs out, that the only growth we're seeing, or made, one of the, one of the two major growths we're seeing is in government employment.
Well, this is, this is so good news. Salisbury University, this is Salisbury and Warwick line here.
Have you got them under education or government?
They're, I'm sorry, I think you're right. They're education.
That's right.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think it's troubling when you see government growing, but the rest of the economy's not.
This is federal, state, and local. And these little blips here are pretty hard to explain. This is the actual month-over-month, this is the government sector. I asked Michelle Dennis to go look at our job numbers, our reporting. As probably the largest employer in the county, we can't figure out why there are these big drops. So I think there's some reporting anomalies here.
Is there, is that not seasonal, public works?
No, well, we have, we have a little seasonality.
Okay, but not much.
This is, this is almost 2,000 job swing. This is like a 1,500 job swing. I can't account for that. So that's an anomalous data there. Talk about that. So housing.
It looks like a heartbeat.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it? It's a, that's the seasonality. Average sale, home, average value of home sales are ticking up here. So this is good news. So that drives the value up for the recoration tax revenue. Still a long way from where it used to be. It's, we're back at 2003 levels, but at least it's stabilized. These are the, the number of taxable deed of voyage transactions. We had a really nice upward trend going to this point. This is the winter quarter that just ended. I think this is, hopefully, this is all cold weather related. So we had a loss of volume of recoration sales, January, February, March. That's probably the cold one. I'm hoping that'll tick back up. But in general, we're stabilized, but we're stabilized at levels that are way, way back in history. So this is our total net taxable real property base. We went up substantially, driven by the new construction and the inflation of home values during the housing boom. We came down $1.3 billion. The good news is that S-Stat now predicts that FY '16 will be the first year of increase since the four years of decline.
What year is that?
FY '16.
Sixteen.
So next fiscal year will be an increase. Now, last year at this time, my estimate was that it was going to be two more years. It'd be '18 before we saw it in October. So the increase in home values, S-Stat is looking at that, and is beginning to drive up their estimate for next year's assessed value. So that's, that's a little bit of good news.
Does that say minus 2.9 for '15?
Yes, it does. Minus 2.5.
2.5.
They had predicted 5% shrink and came in at 2.5.
Yeah, so we're turning, we're turning the corner. So as long as the home values keep going up a little bit, then this, this charge should be valid. Again, these are all moderate estimates of growth, 1.8%. And this includes the effect of both appreciation of home values and the addition of construction.
How do they come up with a 5% change from '15 to '16?
You know, they do one-third of the county each year. So they're out surveying properties in one sector, and while they're doing that, they know what sector they're going to be working on next. So I don't know how they do it specifically, but I'm sure that within their modeling, they know that as housing prices are moving up, that the next sector is likely to have an increase rather than a decrease.
We've gone down, 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 until now it's something we're going to go swing from a minus 2.5 to a plus 2.8.
Well, you know, I had modeled that as a much slower turnaround myself, but you know, I have to take S-Stat's help because I can't ignore this.
Well, I don't.
If you go back, if you go back to the earlier slide, Andy, that shows housing value, the trend line on housing values, what they're, because they're always looking back, what they're seeing, I, I believe what they're seeing, Bob, is that the latest comparable sales are showing an increase in value. And I think we, I think we know that's happening. So they're forecasting that when they go through and assess and they look at the comparables in one-third district that they're going to be looking at, that they're expecting that based on comp sales, the assessment is going to move forward.
And then they go out and do the work.
And then you go out and do the work. If you look at the trend line, if you go forward to the other slide.
When I'm looking at the last January 14th, you've got a downswing, a downhook there. And granted, winter months were, were better.
Yeah, so you, you actually had, you know, three quarters that were better than their previous three quarters. So that's actually a quarter-to-quarter increase for all three of those quarters if you go back to their prior quarter. So everything was, was, was an upturn. This is the winter quarter. It's, that was, it's got to be the weather.
Well, I understand that. I just, I just don't want to be too overly optimistic. I just want, don't want to see us set our budget on overly optimistic predictions.
No.
What they would do, Bob, is, is they would, they would take all this, and they would draw a trend line through these points. And it would show, it would show a slight increase irrespective of volatility. They would smooth that out, and it would show a small increase. And if you go forward to the other slide, what you're going to see is the trend line looks more like the historic trend line. We're seeing, you know, an average, you know, an average appreciation in home values is about 2% a year.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
So you, you know, again, I think what's happening is that we're rebasing ourselves on a pre-housing boom market environment. And that, that as, as you look forward, you're better looking at those years prior to the housing boom. Look to, say, the, you know, 2000 to 2005 trending is probably much more reliable than looking at trending from 2006 to the local. And, and that line looks very much like the historic line in both the country and the state.
Well, I agree. We just, for the last 10 years, if it's taught us nothing, it's taught us that we can't go by what trending has normally done. I mean, we went to the boom, went up so quick, we fell so quick. So nothing has been normal the previous 10 years, 20 years ago, is entirely different than the last 10 years. So, I mean, I like their optimistic look, but I just, I'm not following it.
It's not very optimistic. It's not optimistic like this.
I see it more, I see it more flat than I do even what they're doing.
I mean, what they're saying is it's going to get us, it's going to take us until, what's that, 2026?
Yep.
To get back where we were in 2010.
It's not too optimistic.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
It's not overly optimistic either.
So this just summarizes the, the overall economic trends. Same slide from the last.
Andy, on, on your first one, it says sales tax receipts increasing. I understand there's really no formula for what they give us out of sales tax.
Correct.
So we don't know, you know, we can't base, if sales tax collected in the state was a certain amount of money, we can't base it, we're going to get that percentage of it.
This is simply, it's really a measure of economic activity. How are we dealing overall economically?
Well, what, what I find that I can't understand is, how do you base what we're going to receive if there's no basis at the state level for what they're going to give us? How do you?
Well, I'm not using that slide to predict any of our revenue. I'm just using that slide as a, as a context of our, our economy.
Well, I understand that.
And the state's economy.
Yeah.
So from the state standpoint, my concern is that the line, the growth rate for the state overall is flattening. So we should, they're still on television.
Hello. You can say it, it's open.
The state may have projected more optimistic revenue growth than those lines indicate, in my opinion. And that's why they scaled back their revenue estimate for 14 and 15.
They're, they're estimating at the state level, and they all live on the other side of the bay. So they're not down here where things aren't picking up and not recovering like they are in the western shore.
They were recovering faster.
Right.
They're still recovering faster than we are. That's, that's a true statement. And I, they're not recovering as fast as they thought they were. And that's why in the final closing remarks, you see in the conduit blog, that the state now has a budget gap, structural budget gap. So, and I'd want to switch then and take those thoughts about the, our base and the behavior of the base into the revenue cap computation. For the revenue cap, the formula for revenue for real property tax revenue, when you took the base, divided by 100 times the tax rate, that gave you the revenue. So if you had a $6.5 billion base, divided by 100 times the tax rate at the time, .769, that gave us a revenue of $50 million. So each year's computation stood by itself. It was not related to the prior year's revenue in any way. It was the base, you set a tax rate, you got your revenue. After the revenue cap was imposed, we have, the formula is, next year's revenue is equal to last year's revenue times a factor. And that factor is then defined as the lesser of 2%, 1.02, or the 1 plus the CPI unit. So you can't go more than 2%. So this factor cannot be greater than 1.02. It can be less. And in this case, CPI was 1.5. So for FY '15, that factor's 1.0, so 1.015. Now, the constant yield is 1. So if you were to make that factor 1, then last year's revenue equals this year's revenue. I mean, we don't have a tax rate here. We just have a formula for computing revenue based on the change of inflation. That's really the important part here. That's really the important part here. The tax rate is computed by flipping that formula around, putting the capped revenue that you just determined and dividing it by the base. So now the tax rate is determined first by what the capped revenue is and then dividing by the base. So whatever the base does, if the base increases, the rate goes down. If the base increases, the rate should go up because the base is in the denominator. This is fixed now. So if we fix that and the base changes, that's how we have that sort of double helix slide that I show you from time to time, where the tax rate goes down as the base goes up. And now the tax rate is going up as the base goes down. Sorry, huh?
Yeah, that's right.
So this is the, what we're dealing with now. So year-over-year real property revenue growth is then limited to the revenue cap formula on the existing base plus tax collected on new construction. Because new construction is not part of that computation. So we get two, two increases. One is the, what we apply, 1.5% from the CPIU and this year up to 2% plus the effect of new construction. So I'll walk through then this year's. For FY15, CPI is 1.5%. The FY14 revenue base is set by the state in February by the constant yield notices. So they tell us what that revenue number is. And the cap revenue increment is then 0.015 times the base. So that's 792,000. That's the increment from 1.5%. Total FY15 revenue allowed then is last year's plus the increment. So it's, so this was 53,600,473. And the taxable base from the constant yield notice, and you all deal with this, we have a constant yield hearing. It's based on this report. We send out the newspaper ad. So this is then the tax rate that I've computed. So our new revenue divided by the base, that gives us the tax rate of 9516. So that incorporates 1.5 percentage increase in revenue over last year. The state also provides us in the same report, an estimate for new construction. And the new construction is divided between half year, full year. And so from a formula basis, there's an aggregate number. So this is the aggregate number, 18,739,285 is the value of new construction that will then be taxable at the new tax rate of 9516. So that yields 178,323 of new revenue from new construction. That's 0.34% growth. So we have then 1.5% growth on the base for 792,000 plus new construction of 0.34, which is 178,000. So total new revenue as a percentage increases 1.84% or 970,448. That, all of these computations are shown on page four of the budget submission, this, this page here. I think you all are curious about that. These are the same computations that have been in the budget since the revenue cap was instituted. So that's where the growth comes from. That's the value of the growth. Over the years, I thought it was interesting to look at what new construction contributed. So as we went through the housing boom, you can see that we're getting 900,000, nearly 1.2, between 1 and 2, 1.4, 1.2. And then as the housing market collapsed and the recession hit, we're down here in the under 200,000 range for new construction.
14, then bottom in 14 of those.
That was the two.
Two large, non-rented projects that went up.
So the huge impact on the growth in our revenue from new construction. And if you wanted then to combine that with new construction piece here, tax rate below it. So this shows from '05 to '15, the changes in total revenue. And when you get to FY12, this is a negative change, 2,172,000. This was the effect of setting the tax rate below the constant yield. So when we didn't follow the formula of the revenue cap and we set the tax rate less than the constant yield, we gave up $2.2 million a year forever. That's, that's a step function. That money's gone forever. So over 30 years, we've given up the new construction of the school. Here's the, an interesting part that I think is that, look at the proportionality between where the new growth can come from. In the past, it was about half rate and half growth. And now the growth is just a fraction of it. And I've done this in a percentage basis so you can see. It used to be about 50/50 growth and cap computation. And now we're in the 80s, 70% cap and down in the 18 to 20-something percent.
So construction's no longer driving our revenue wisdom?
That's correct.
Not right now.
And if you believe, as I believe, that that bubble is never going to happen again, or not in our lifetime, this is, the pattern here is more important than the pattern back here. This, this pattern is an anomaly. The housing boom was an anomaly. So what we have, what we have to do to protect our revenue stream is you remember to set the tax rate to what is allowed by the cap. Cap envisioned us, limits us to 2% growth based on, that's the charter of limitation.
And if we do, then we end up like 2012.
If you don't do that, then you do, you wind up like 2012. And when you, and when you lose that revenue, it's, it's a step function down. It's like cutting a rung off the bottom of your ladder. You can never reach the peak of your house again. And if you cut it off again, then you can't reach that third floor window again. You just cut the ladder off, it doesn't grow anymore. That's the real danger of our revenue cap because it's based on the prior year's revenue. No matter how you scream at it, how many numbers you throw at it, you can never grow it by more than 2%. And without new construction coming in behind you, as we had during the revenue, during the housing boom, you can't compensate. So separate discussion from, and I don't want to have a discussion on the value of the cap, but 2% is a very scary number four, five, six years from now when inflation heats up. From a mathematical standpoint, the, the historic rate of inflation in the country for 40 years has been about 4.5%. So from a mathematical standpoint, when you're limited to 2% growth from your existing base, what you're counting on is new construction making up for that. So to make it simple, if you go to 2% growth in the rate and you don't get 2.5% growth in new construction, you're going to be losing ground to inflation on a historic basis. So as long as you've got new construction at a rate of 2.5% or above, you're probably okay vis a vis inflation costs. When it dips below that, that's going to suggest a new construction. And that's kind of where we are because it was 0.34% of the increase. So we got 1.8, 0.3 of that was new construction. So we didn't make 2%. Of course, inflation's only 1.5, that's good. But new construction did not make much of a contribution and it's not likely to make much of a contribution in the future.
But the 1.5 is based on a CPI.
CPI unit.
And a CPI is not a realistic figure to base inflation, to be honest.
CPIU.
CPIU, CPIU right now is being, is really being deflated by the drop in home values. So for instance, if you go to the grocery store, you order free groceries, then 2% over the ones you were paying last year. It's only over that 10 to 12%. So CPIU is not necessarily, depending on what's happening in the economy, it's not necessarily the best indicator of what the growth in wages, energy, health insurance.
Food cost, of course.
Food cost, those types of things. It's not, it's not as discreet an indicator as, as some other indicator might look right then. Take away the, I think if you took away the downward effect of housing on the CPIU, it would probably be an okay index to use historically. But right now, it's a lumpy index to use.
A lot of people use it, Federal Reserve is using it.
Well, Federal Reserve likes to use it because that's how like fools they think they're being inspired.
Andy, I was just going to ask you a question, if you don't mind, before you go any further. Going back to the page that you, total revenue growth from real property tax that you said is in our page four of the budget submission. If I'm reading this right, page four of our budget submission looks like it's 967130 and here it looks like it's 970448. So which number?
I'm sorry, which number are you?
I'm going to this page.
Let me go back.
Okay. And you've got it is 970448. But yet if I go to page four, underestimated total growth in tax revenues compared to prior year allowed, it says 967130.
That's actually a different comparison. So in this, this slideshow, no, the slideshow is correct and this exhibit is comparing total growth in tax revenues compared to prior year allowed revenue. That's a different, that's a different difference.
Okay, so where it is, so this page four of budget submission should not be on there then?
Well, everything above that box is there.
Okay. So what is, what number are we using in the budget then? For total new revenue?
The 970.
970448 for the budget.
Is in, it's what's in the budget and that's what we're supposed to use.
So Andy, they're both, it's accurate. But this is, that last block is a different comparison.
The 970448, total new revenue for FY15 at, at the revenue cap. If the assessments turn around like they're saying they might next year, would that mean that we wouldn't next year be able to reach 970,000? Would that allowable increase/decrease?
No, that's, it's based on this year's revenue. So you start with this year's revenue. Multiply by the inflation factor. And then divide it by the new base.
Then is this the, is this about the maximum we would be allowed to increase? It won't go up much more than this, right?
So if you had, well.
Say next year.
In terms of bill rate?
Right, so let's look at the slide.
As the base increases, your bill rate is going to drop in order to get constant yield.
Right.
Right now, with a 1.5, FY15 is based on a 1.5. The slope of this line is then based on a 2%. And there's some new construction assumptions in there. So that gives you a 1.3. So the equivalent number going forward at 2% is 1.3 as opposed to 970,000.
Okay.
That's, this answers your question exactly.
Yeah. So 1.3, so if we didn't dip into our fund, 1.3, that would be all we would have to address.
It's on, I'm sorry, on real property.
On real property.
Okay.
So then on income tax then, at that modest slope, now go back and think about the slope of the line on the job employment growth, translated through my, what do you call my regression analysis? So the digression analysis. So that yields 445,000 per year.
Okay.
At that modest rate of employment growth. And then this is personal property tax, which is growing very slightly. And that's tied to our elimination of the inventory tax.
And our decoupling.
And our decoupling, which where we set our tax rate at, at the CPI, it's tied to the CPIU as well.
We actually use the same methodology for the personal property tax rate that we use for real property.
And we covered that last year, as you recall. So this then is how the slopes of the two primary revenue sources, personal property, income. And you can see, these really don't have much of an effect.
Right. So around 1.8 million total.
Yep.
That's all we'd have per year to address things if we don't reach into our.
Two million total. So the next slide, it's two million total, all in, roll everything up.
Under these assumptions.
Under all, yes.
Sure.
There's a ton of assumptions to get into this, but that's a.
And since, and since these represent the reliant share of the revenue, we can only afford to go into the fund balance not very long.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. You can only spend fund balance for one-time expenses.
Right.
But that's still a part of your whole, it's part of the whole competition.
And it depends on how rapidly you want to go after, after deferred capital spending. I mean, that's really a, a significant decision, probably one of the most significant decisions that I think we have to make this year is how, how much do we want to invest in trying to catch up on deferred infrastructure spending?
My question still goes back, how do you justify, we're losing, we're losing jobs, we're losing value on property. Yes, I realize we're supposed to come up in property value next year, but, so we have less taxpayers. We're looking for more money, so it puts more money on the backs of those that are paying. How do you, how do you justify that?
Well, I mean, to give you an example, Bob, I built my house in 1998. So my first full year of assessment was 1999. My tax bill for 2014 was within $100 of my tax bill for 1999. And when I compare the costs of what the county has to provide in 2014 versus what the county has to provide in 1999, you know, I'm looking at saying, hey, I've got a pretty deal. If you took that 19, if you took a 2006 tax rate, which is about where we are right now, and adjusted it solely for inflation, the tax rate would be at about $113. So the, the, the adjustment of the tax rate is to reflect what's happening with the base and to give us some room, some room. And the way we're approaching this is to give us some room to go after those one-time costs that are built up. And it becomes a choice as to whether or not we want to aggressively go after our infrastructure and those built-up costs or whether we don't. I think if we don't, in the long run, it's going to cost us a lot more money. Because it's not going to get less expensive to do the things that we have to do in the county. And at some point in time, that'll have, that'll have a degrading effect on whether or not people want to move here, whether or not people want to locate businesses here. So I understand your point, but I think there's a balance that you have to.
The revenue cap, so this is a very arcane esoteric discussion. The revenue cap formula caused us to lower the tax rate while property value, the total county base was going up. But the total county, the total base went up because there was new construction. And the new construction and the recent construction, home values were inflating much faster than some of the older homes, more pre-existing homes in the county. So we've actually, the formula drove in some differences, anomalies between his home that was built in the 90s, probably somebody's home that was built in the 1950s, had a much different tax treatment relative to someone. tax treatment relative to someone whose home was built in 2005, and they paid full market price for it in 2005. Those homes rode the bubble up, they rode the bubble down. And so their tax rate, the changes in that tax rate fit them pretty well in terms of paying a reasonably comparable amount of money for that home. But if you imagine the rural home that was built in the forties, fifties, sixties, uh, their market value didn't change proportionally as fast, and yet the tax rate was changing.
Yeah, they didn't have the same volatility.
Didn't have the same overhead and expenses in the county also. But take your county, what county you live in now?
Carolina.
Carolina County. What would it take for me to get you to move to Wycom Creek County? What is your tax base there? No.
I plead the fifth on that.
If I want to get people to move here, you know, they can't understand, they can't have the, the tax base put on the few that are, are paying the taxes.
On the other hand, you have to have government services for people to move here at all.
Understood.
Without, without government services, which includes the schools, library, the police, the U.S. Keter.
As well as businesses, we've got to get businesses to move here too.
Well, now, we have addressed the business climate very aggressively here. Uh, we are eliminating the tax on the inventory, the business inventory. That's worth about, when we made the computation, it was worth about 1.9 million dollars a year in revenue. So we're phasing that out over five years. And yet, so, so when we're doing that, we've decoupled the personal property tax rate overall because the businesses were really, now they got a huge, the businesses got, uh, as the real property tax rate went down. Is there a hole here somewhere? Should I stop? The, the, the personal property tax rate went down by 2.5 times. The base in personal property, as you know, doesn't move with real property values. So there was a benefit to businesses during that period. Now we've decoupled it to incentivize them to continue to reinvest. And if you look at our difference, I think it was 20 or 21 cents with a. With a value percent on that personal property tax. Where again, we're, we are doing a lot to incentivize businesses to re, to stay and reinvest, and that is reducing our revenue. So we're giving up revenue from inventory, we're giving up revenue from personal property tax rate. And the reason we're doing that is because we recognize your concerns exactly that. We need businesses to stay and grow and come here.
And that's also to take advantage of one of our key strengths, that being Route 50, Route 13, the port, the rail, and the airport. So we're in an ideal location for distribution and warehousing. So, so we collectively did that intentionally in order to try to incent that type of development here. We are natural for that kind of a business to locate. We weren't while we had an inventory tax and while we didn't have a, an automatic manufacturing inception. So, so now we can take those strengths and we can put topspin on those strengths because we've got a more favorable tax environment for that type of business.
So that's good to emphasize. That's a very positive action that the council executive taken last year. So for this year, it's 20.75, so 20 cents times 41,000 a penny. That's a, that's a fairly sizable commitment that we're making in revenue, foregone revenue to encourage our businesses. So let me just drop back a slide to the disparity grant. This is very, very important to us for, for two reasons. One, it's a measure of our relative wealth. We are one of the poorest counties in the state. And when the state capped us, uh, before the state capped us, we were earning about 740,000, receiving 740,000 on disparity grant revenue from the state. It went up in 10 to 2.2 million, and that's the rate that was capped at for 11, 12, and 13. And the state capped it because they were having their own budgetary problems, and so they capped it to save money at the state level.
Explain in what goes into that wealth computation.
So it's the per, uh, it's the per capita income tax yield and 75% of the state average yield per capita. So when we are, our tax, if our county per capita income is below 75% of the state average yield per capita, then the state will give us the difference under an unconstrained formula.
If, if we have our local income tax rated to maximum?
Yes, and we do.
I, I know that.
Yeah.
But, but the disparity grant doesn't benefit us unless we do that.
As of current, you say?
Yes. It would drop down to 40% if we were to go below.
Exactly.
Like between 3.1 and 3, 3.2, you get 40%. There's three tiers. So for 15, our yield per capita is $466, the state yield is. Ours, the county, is 330. So to make up that difference, we would be entitled to 130, $36 per person. With 100,000 people, that's 13.74 million. So this is the unconstrained formula amount here. The state has constrained the formula to 60%, so we're getting 8.2. So we're very happy to get 8.2.
But there's money on the table.
There's money on the table.
Those calculations are, include both ordinary income and capital gains?
It is personal, personal income.
Personal income.
So it would include capital gains.
So when you're looking at, you know, the wealthier counties, you know, Cape'n'Combe County, where you've got people who, particularly in, in this sort of market, where taking advantage of, of the stock market, selling assets all recognized in capital gains, have much more activity of that type in the wealthier counties than you have in the rural counties. The problem with it, I mean, the, the philosophical problem with this is, is that we all know that the state mandates what I'll call homogenous spending across 24 separate and distinct jurisdictions. The disparity grant is designed to address that. And when you, when you keep the pedal down on the homogenous spending mandates and you pull back on the disparity grant, um, rural counties are taken in the shorts. It's that simple.
And so our, our neighbor to the east, Worcester, is by the, one of, is one of the wealthiest counties. So thus the disparity between the two counties drives expect, disparities and, and people have the same expectations, but we don't have the funding to meet those expectations for salaries and government services. So this is designed to help close that gap.
The figure of 100,647 people, when, when did our census go up to that?
That's the, the state projects off of the decennial federal census.
Well, would that mean then that we're going to become liable for the rain tax after we hit 100,000 in the county?
That, that rain tax applies only in unincorporated areas.
Unincorporated areas.
It's only the unincorporated. It doesn't count the entire county population, it's only the unincorporated. So we're a long ways away from that.
Okay, so, but I just didn't want them to pay us on 100,000, all of a sudden say, oh, by the way, now that you've hit 100,000.
And we're, our unincorporated population is way below, way below 100,000. Yeah, so, yeah, it's around 60,000, I think, maybe a little bit more than that. So we're a long ways away from that threshold.
While I see that, that's nice to get that much money, it just means that we're becoming poorer and poorer.
That's right.
It does.
You know, so it's really no great honor, our welfare check's getting bigger.
We don't disagree with that. What we're saying is that when the state mandates that 24 separate and distinct jurisdictions have to spend at the same rate, and then they don't recognize disparity in wealth, that formula doesn't work. It doesn't work.
So it was a good plan when they enacted it. They get in trouble financially with everybody else in the reception. They capped that program, and then when they, they didn't fully uncapped it, so that we are still feeling a pinch because of that. Now, you're right, it's a measure of our relative wealth.
Yeah, we're unhappy about it. You know what?
So that's our total spending then, if you roll it all up, it comes to about $2 million per year in the slope going forward. So that gives us our total revenue estimate for FY15 of 122,986. And this is the same slide that you saw at the public hearing. If you'd like, I can go through each one of these, or if you have any specific questions I could have to answer. These are all the major categories for funding. And you can certainly ask with some other hearing.
Sure.
So our strategy, I think we've said a couple of times, is that we need to match the expense type to the funding source. So if we have recurring expenses, they need to be matched to be paid for by recurring revenue. And then if we want to do, buy a piece of a heavy equipment, if we want to buy a piece of property, then those types of one-time capital, or capital expenditures are best funded either through debt or through use of fund balance. So we try very hard to do that, I'm going to spare you some of the slides that I threw up at the crowd, but we have a long-term view of how that matches up and whether or not we're spending beyond our means in terms of recurring and non-recurring. So this slide then addresses that. This has changed slightly from the one you saw during the public hearing because we, we funded Warwick Community College, uh, with another $102,000 since the hearing. And so I had to pull that and then change the slide a bit. So here's our new revenue, 122,986, use of fund balance of 6.4 billion, so the total budget of 129 million.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
Um, I asked a question a few months ago, and I think I finally got the information. The $6 million that, uh, was turned back in, that was not used for capital expenditures, that can only be used for capital expenditures or paying down the debt, where is that money at?
That money is in the CIP computation. And if you look, that would be on exhibit B.
Where, where are we looking here?
Of the budget.
What page is that?
That is page, uh.
I read it.
Page five. I read mine, it's not numbered correctly, it's the last.
Under revenue?
Under expense, it's exhibit B on the, after the expense budget.
Okay, so what are we doing with it?
So, all right, so I'll, I'll talk through it then. We had the six, we spent, we've already spent some. That, that left us about 3.8, almost 3.8, I believe. We're, we are putting up, we're committing 3.7 of that in this year's CIP plan. So that is one of the things that you should consider this year. We're, we're committing 2 point, nearly 2.3 million dollars in PEGO from the general fund. We're committing 3.7 million dollars of the existing bond money. And then we're proposing borrowing, uh, 1 point, 16.5 million.
So where did the other go, the other 2 million, 2.4 million?
Probably in 14, we committed it in FY14 CIP. We allocated 2 other capital projects as part of the budget process class for 14. So, um, I get caught up in myself here, is page 24 or 27? That's what I was.
24.
24 or 27.
So in this, in this 129 million of 434,000, $69, we're looking at what? We're looking at a 4.3 property tax increase, can you collectively?
The real property change over last year is 1.7%.
He's asking for the, what the lift in the door rate is. I think it's 4.37.
That's 4.3.
Yeah, 4.3.
And each penny of that brings in about half a million dollars?
I'll give you the numbers.
560.
It's 565,134.
Okay. 565, 134.
How much of that was constant yield in?
It's constant yield is 2.89 cents from today's rate to the constant yield rate. So, and then 1.4 cents from the constant yield to the proposed tax rate.
So what is our real, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing different numbers here, and I guess on page 10 of the revenue, um, the budget message, I say our total fund balance, beginning of FY15, is 39,181,722. Okay, so that's our total fund balance, that's what we have left over.
That includes rainy day, it includes assigned or insurance funds, permanent funds. So that's the entire balance. And then the unassigned amount, subset of that, is 28, 28,767, 288.
So you bring this down to 22 when you do the $600,000. Yeah. I mean, $6 million, excuse me.
Right. Right, so that table on page 10 is really, is, is important. We can just walk through it now because we're there. You start with a 28,767, that's the unassigned fund balance. We're going to transfer 255,000 within the fund balance categories from unassigned to assigned. So we're not spending, but we're changing its status, it's moving to the assigned.
It's the FOP debt.
That's the death benefit for the FOP. Then it's. That's 2.28 million for PEGO capital, that's what we're going to spend, we're going to transfer that to the capital projects. 88,780 will be dedicated to non-recurring operating other than roads. So that's for, then, that's where you'll find in the budget, people who have vehicles or computer equipment or other one-time.
Departmental capital.
88,000. Then the, the roads number is, is 3.
3.9.
Yep.
So that's, that 3.9 is for, um, not, non-reoccurring, so that's, and I, and I don't know whether we can call that non-reoccurring or not, because roads, that's for paving roads, right?
Good point. That's a good point. It, we don't have to spend it. So in the sense that it's not salary, it's not a contract that has to be renewed, it's not, it's not P and I, so we don't have to spend it. That's why we're calling it non-recurring. Is that, that's right on the edge.
It's right on the, on the, on the. You know, I've heard, I've heard for years, we don't borrow money to fix roads, but when we first, when I, right after I got elected, we borrowed money to fix roads.
So in the same fashion that we're not maintaining the old courthouse.
Yeah.
Or we're not replacing carpet in this building, which we should be. That's, those are non-recurring, but maybe they, they're recurring.
You know, we can call discretionary spending, but that becomes a moving target.
And the 900,000 is for the seed money.
Yep.
For the disability.
That's going to go outside the county, that's going to go to a trust fund, that's an expense.
All right.
And then seed money for the volunteer fire department. Each year we've had a discussion on, tied to LoSAP, it's not really LoSAP. It's a death benefit fund that's tied to their lengthy service program requirements.
And then 200,000 for capital. Okay, so when we're doing that, what are we using the 4.3, the 4.3 cents? Where, what are we using that basically for, reoccurring expenses as in, if we're not, if we're not raising salaries, um, the 4.3 is being used for just other increases in?
Well, 3 cents of it is just to fund what we're already doing.
Fund what we're already doing, okay.
So, so what's on top of that, the 1.
1.4.
1.4 cents is to fund, um, things like increases in health costs. And we can, we can drill through that.
Inflationary costs.
And you have inflation on contracts.
Okay, so when you did the, when you did the, you're, um, you're figuring on what you were. So when you did the, when you did the, you're figuring on what you were going to take out of the estimate, of the fund balance, where did you come up with exactly that number? Instead of taking six point four million, why did you come up with that number instead of five point four or seven point four?
Well, really, the fund balance number is the result of all the other decisions that are made. So we, you have the, the new revenue, that's fixed.
Okay.
And then we work the expense budget. And we kind of know what this is, and we look at the expenses, and we cut stuff out of the expense budget until we get down to, we know that the number from use of private fund balance is tolerable. And so that's what we'll, I'll call the six point four million, is a tolerable use of fund balance.
So it's just, it's just?
It's the, it's to balance the budget.
See, yeah, okay. It's to balance the budget of what we want to do, I understand that. So if you, where is it written, and where is it law, that you cannot use fund balance for other operating expenses?
Well, it's not written anywhere, it's not law, it's just bullshit.
It's just not a good, just not a good business practice.
Yeah. We did that, we did that back as we were coming, a fellow calling off the cliff, and we could not reduce our recurring cost fast enough. So you have, you have salaries and operating costs that are very sticky, you just can't cut them that fast, but we were losing revenue that fast. So we spent fund balance to cover our recurring operating costs, and then we began, and then we used methodologies such as no pay raises, furloughs, worth about one point nine million, we deferred payments to the OPEB trust and the pension trust, and those are real expenses that should be recurring, and we didn't make them because they were slightly discretionary. Now, the rate agencies made written comments about that, they did not approve our, not funding our pensions, but it was a strategy that got us through. As it turns out, that money actually rolled into fund balance, because some of our other efforts paid off. So yes, we did use it, but we used it where we had to. So we want to control, to your point, we want to control the growth of recurring costs, and we want to make sure that we never let recurring costs get ahead of our recurring revenues again, because when the housing boom was going like this, we chased that revenue with expenses, and we signed up for some expenses that were recurring that we couldn't cover.
Somewhere in this, in this budget message, it says that the fund balance is created by monies that is left over from far years.
Right, it's the net effect of revenue, actual revenue and actual expenses. If you underexpend the budget, you get more or less revenue, that's your one.
So, so those, this fund balance was created from property taxes or?
Yes.
Income taxes, that in the past would have been used anyway to, would have been used anyway in the operating budget, but wasn't used.
Well, it was appropriated, yes, but it just didn't get spent.
It just didn't get spent?
Right.
Okay, so it was, it was created from monies that was supposed to have been spent on operating budgets anyway?
From a policy standpoint, most public finance, what was the association?
Governing magazine?
Governing magazine.
Government finance officers.
In the case that you should have about six months operating costs in unrestricted fund balance, just like you would in your household.
Well, it should be, yeah. I mean, it's only, it's only naturally, occasionally that don't happen though.
Right.
You know, when people reach a, reach a point.
That's accurate.
What I'm getting at is I'm not in favor of this, of this property tax increase, you know? It's, I think we've wrung about all we can wring out of the citizens of Wyomacan County. I'm not hearing any favorable comments from anyone I'm talking to that, until I get here, of course, you know, for, for a property tax increase at this time. So I don't know whether it's wise to go further into the fund balance or not, but, you know, what I'm trying to emphasize here is, this fund balance did come from property tax and, and income tax plus other revenues that we would have used at the time for general day-to-day operations.
Well, see, so I hope, we have in the past done that, and we've established this policy, we started, we're thinking about it during the recession, we formalized it last year, and we're following it this year, where we're trying to match expenses to revenue source. And the slides that I pulled here, take another view and say, well, if we have a twelve percent target for P and I, for death service, then the flip side of that is eighty-eight percent for operating, for non-P and I. So if you consider that you have twelve percent always, at least twelve percent going into reinvestment, then you shouldn't spend more than eighty-eight percent on the recurring costs, operating salaries, benefits.
Now, the twelve percent is not written policy, that's a general accounting policy.
No, it's our policy here in the county.
It's county's.
It's county's longstanding policy.
It's a longstanding policy, it's not, never been codified.
No, but it's.
It's not the charter, it's not a, it's not legislation.
It's a reasonable financial policy.
So if you had, if you had not driven up recurring spending during the housing boom, we might have had a big fund balance. Philosophically, that creates pressure to spend it, or to not raise the taxes. But we have a responsibility to renew the infrastructure of the county. We do have old schools that need to be renovated and maintenance before, and we have old county buildings that need maintenance, we have vehicles that need to replace on a regular basis. So what we want to do going forward is to make sure that we're growing recurring revenue at a rate that allows us to reinvest to replace the assets that we're consuming. Because every day you go out and start that car, you're consuming that asset, every day you turn the lights on in the building, you're consuming the asset of the buildings, eventually we have to replace the light fixtures as well as the bulb. So we can't spend all of our money, tax receipts, on recurring revenue, and we can't crank the revenue, the revenue stream down, the tax rate down, so that it only covers recurring operating, because you're ignoring the cost of the assets that have to be replaced. So you can either borrow money, or you can save money. Borrowing costs money, so I think on the eleven million dollar bonds, worth of debt, you're going to pay four million dollars worth of interest. So.
Over the life.
Over the life. So it might be better just to save money. So saving money requires a tax rate to be in excess of your recurring annual operating costs, if you want to have a savings.
To put it in its own terms, we should be getting seven million dollars a year from the state in highway user revenue. And that figure is suspiciously close to how much we believe we have to go into fund balance in order to keep our infrastructure held together. And we, from my personal standpoint, I think that, I think that we have to, to some extent, take the gloves off with regard to highway user revenue, because to get to Joe's point, at some point in time, you, you, we should not be here in this county underwriting rapid transit in two counties. We should be receiving the registration fees that we have paid, and we can take care of our own roads. And that's, in the simplest of terms, that loss of highway user revenue is the, is the huge bogen in this county's budget in terms of taking care of our infrastructure. It's, 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 it's almost dollar for dollar. And we've got an election coming up, and hopefully, we might have a different, a different reception at the state level, or to some appropriate restoration of this highway user revenue. But, but that's, but that's something that unless we want to continue, we have a slide later, unless we want to continue to let the roads deteriorate, we have to at some point in time begin to protect the roads better than we've been able to the past five or six years since highway.
We can't sustain a three point eight million dollar investment in the roads next year or the year after, that doesn't work. The fund balance disappears too fast. So it is, that's, it's non-recurring, because we can't spend it.
Part of what we're trying to do with that investment that we're making is to put Lee and Lee out in a position where they can be more self-sufficient in future years than they have been in past years. And I have confidence in those two guys, that they can do that for us, if we give them the right resources. Can they be totally self-sufficient without highway user revenue? No. To some extent, it has to come back to the county, and I, again, just to reiterate, I think that we really need to take a very, very strong position on that going forward. Not that we haven't in the past, but I think it has to be strong, because the financial implications are, to me, very stark. There's a one-to-one relationship.
Stay and pave and then cook road all the way up. The road's not.
Please, dump for, dump for salt in my.
They're doing a group job.
It's good.
They got all kinds of money.
Yeah, I wish they'd talked to us before they did, and put that.
So the General Assembly did have some impact on our CIP projection. The Wreckin Parks was looking for five million dollars in matching funds from two major projects, and we only got two million. So that, I've reduced our matching funds from the county by two point five million. So the new debt issue will be only sixteen point five. So this, that's a change. If you were to hold the budget narrative up in the budget against the CIP that you authorized, that's the difference. And in the narrative where I refer to, we need to make decisions in the future, that's really what I referred to. We don't know yet how we're going to restructure those two major projects, primarily even Civic Center, but also the athletic field expansion. I think the athletic field expansion is probably doable with the planning that we got, it was a little stretched out, but the Civic Center's a fundamental change.
You have to change the change in that whole project.
So we haven't had time to deal with that, so.
So how much is it going to cost for Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex?
I'm going to meet with Gary Thursday morning, Bob, to talk about that.
I mean, of the?
We're committing in, in the budget before you, that's, we were going to put up one point five million, sorry, we're going to keep our one million dollar commitment. The state, we had asked the state for one point five, and the state provided one.
Excellent.
So our budget submission continues to, with the one million dollar commitment from the county, to match a one million dollar commitment from the state, although we had asked for one point five. So that still leaves Wreckin Parks with some decisions to make up. How do you make up a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall?
I suspect we have to change the phasing on that project as well. We were going to use the UTRSA people living in town.
So basically, that's all going towards the athletic fields. So are we taking the Civic Center off the board?
Now, the Civic Center, we were looking for three point five million from the state, and the state offered, has appropriated one in this, in fifteen. Doesn't mean they're not going to give us something in sixteen and seventeen, but we were going to match that dollar-for-dollar debt issue at three point five, so I reduced that to one million.
We're going to match the state and reduce the scope of what we anticipate doing in this coming year. And we'll have to phase that project differently, and that'll depend on state funding.
Okay. And I guess the other one, Shorebird Stadium, they, they've asked for renovations, such as the, what do you call it, stadium, not stadium, but out there, the berm and that type of thing. Are we putting anything towards, towards that this year?
We're making one point five million in, in bond money for the previous stadium, and we are expecting a one point nine million dollar match from the seventh inning stretch.
The proposal there is a third, a third, and a third, and again, we're meeting.
But ours is going to come through bond, not through cash, fund?
Correct. I'm meeting, we're having a negotiating session with the Shorebird ownership one day here in the next two weeks, to fine tune that.
So to look where we are today, in terms of fund balance along the bottom, you can see the buildup of the fund balance of '07, and then if you look up, you can see where we spent fund balance, as I referred to, to cover operating expenses. Then we began accumulating fund balances, because we were cutting our expenses primarily through OPEB pension deferral and furloughs. Then we reached FY14 and 15, where in both cases, when the red line is above the green line, that is for Pago capital, non-recurring expenditures. So while we're spending the fund balance down, we're spending it down for non-recurring reasons. So that's the budget, so let me slip one more in here, because you all have asked about it before. This data is in the narrative, in a table format, but this shows you the Board of Education's total budget profile. So they receive funds from the federal government, state, and accounting, and so they have gone in FY06 from one hundred and thirty-seven million total budget to one hundred and seventy-seven point three million for FY15, as submitted by us and proposed by the, and funded from the state. So that's, over those, that period of time, that's a twenty-nine point four percent growth in their spending capability. During that same period, enrollment went down one point six percent, inflation averaged two point four percent, and the average budget growth was three point three percent. So while we're under pressure from the Board of Ed to provide them additional funding, the other argument is that they have received a growth in funding in combination with the state, federal, and county, that exceeds the average inflation rate, while they've had a decrease in enrollment. So we think that while they would like more money, that they have, they're within their means to execute an education program satisfactorily.
So what's our increase this year?
Eighty-eight thousand.
Flat to last year.
Flat to last year, it's actually an eighty-eight thousand dollar left over M O E, because they have decreasing enrollment.
The M O E threshold went down because they lost enrollment.
I saw in here somewhere a two point four million.
There's, that's two point four is the teacher pension contribution, that's actually decreased by thirty-five thousand, but that's a state number.
You recall last year, we, we put in the budget, one-time capital spending for security and technology on reimbursement, I think that was two point eight or something like that. That's not there this year, so their, their operating appropriation in this budget is flat to what they got last year.
Did the state and federal government increase theirs, the Board of Education?
State did, it's about four million, I think the federal government cut some.
And we're giving them eighty-eight thousand above and beyond.
Above M O E, so officially.
Over M O E.
Eighty-eight thousand over M O E.
Right.
It's flat to last year's.
Right. So if council decides not to provide the eighty-eight thousand, we can.
Then, then you cut it by eighty-eight thousand, then beat, and meet.
And meet maintenance.
Yeah, always, you have to meet M O E.
Absolutely.
Penalties for that are.
Do, do, do you have that slide on road, do you? This is a really interesting slide, and I think it, I think it helps put in the context of the, our thinking on why we're being somewhat aggressive with roads.
Why we're being somewhat what?
Somewhat aggressive with promoting roads, this slide will, I think it'll put it in the context.
On pension OPEB, how are we, what have you got scheduled for this year? Are we fully funding it, or coming up where we should be, or not?
We, yes, it would be our. We, yes, it would be an hour.
I like the state.
I like the state, a three hour.
It would be what, ninety-six, ninety-eight percent, ninety-six percent?
Pension's ninety-six, um, uh, OPEB is.
Thirty, something like that.
Ten, thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-six, something like that. The, the.
Which is up.
Plan we have, we get to, um, full funding by the twenty twenty-sixth.
How about from current slide?
There we go.
That's a pretty slide, you wanna talk to that? That says if you don't do road maintenance on a, on a scheduled basis, the cost goes up, instead of two dollars to renovate, uh, along the way, to six to eight dollars.
There's a couple of them.
A couple across.
Aren't you lucky?
Andy, why don't you move those down?
Is that by choice or by?
So this, this says that over the life of a piece of highway, um, you should, you should be doing incremental maintenance along the way at a reduced cost, as opposed to waiting to allow the road to degrade, because as it degrades, the cost goes up, uh, to repair the road. So that's where we are in a lot of our roads, uh, we have been delaying maintenance for years now, so the accumulation, uh, of cracks and potholes makes what should be a moderately priced cost go up substantially. So that's why we're going to invest so much money this year, uh, to try to do a little catch-up work.
Well, you know, I, I wanna comment on that, and there's no, probably no one sitting up here that hears more complaints than I do because of where I live, about the condition of the roads. But, um, Wayne, I remind you, about a year ago, when we were trying to talk about putting money in roads, your statement was, we have to be careful how much we put in there because they can't use it. You remember that? They can't use it in that period of time.
And we bought equipment now, and we're investing in equipment so that they can, that's why I want them to be self-sufficient. I wanna go away from hiring outside road contractors and spending four times what we would spend doing it ourselves. I think that's a foolish strategy.
Well, I, um.
We can't afford that strategy.
I, I, I understand that. The other, um, the other point is, is we did have two point four million in roads that we hadn't spent on, on repairing roads.
On this year?
That we moved, you know, so we had, we had monies, monies there that we hadn't used. The other, getting back to Wayne's statement, you know, I watch our road crews, and I've been watching them this past week or so. You know, people that get out and pave roads go to work early and work late. You know, our guys are on the job by eight-thirty or nine and leave at two-thirty or three, and that's, um, that's not conducive of how you get roads paved.
It's conducive to avoiding overtime.
You have to get out and work to get the jobs done, too.
Our guys work pretty hard.
So I'm, this is done with the slides, so if you'd like to move on to the narrative, I can do that, if you'd like to take a short break, we can do that.
Can we have a break?
Yeah.
Five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.